Good evening, my loved ones. A meeting will now commence. And please join me in flagrating I flagrature to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. And now I'm going to say hi for the men and women in the services at home and abroad, for the police and firefighters and the way they protect us here at home, for the first responders who have been really very hard work probably since the end of November, and for those who have fallen victims to the pandemic. Thank you. And now I'll turn to our private guest who are going to be the moderator for comments on contents of agenda items. Commissioner Jackson.
My good friend. Item number one, item regarding language line services. We already do the line 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 services off the not a lot of system. A lot of times we need that to interpret with a pick up or a crime. I lost it. We already identified language line services for assistance for victims of crime. And then it had over 200 languages. This is just to be able to use utilize the app that it gives. There's no extra cost of vote, but it is a contract. And we utilize this app. So like if a video without the phone and your car, we give a video conference which is basically easier for person to talk about what they see. It's easier to have onsite confrontation. And one thing I really like about it is how they're able to utilize second act. So I think it's a great addition to what we have already.
Thank you. And now, um, Chief Scrooge.
I have a good agenda just to say before. So I'd like to remind you, President. The full season of August, so like for my reasons, there isn't some pocket cards on the products. How to type something available is on file. Also, while this season approaching, please make sure your house number is visible. Make sure you put certain decorations. Please do. You go, you can first, our house. Um, we have, thank you.
This is Giamaniello.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I have one item on the agenda tonight. Item number four. The first one is the transfer on of the 58,300 for the third party ICC services. And the part D of that is going to be the breakdown. The 25,000 for the 111 Franklin and the 33,340 for the 555 Stewart.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Mr. DeFrasista.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items on the agenda this evening. Item number seven is a change order for recyclables. This is actually an order to replenish or reserve the recyclables to have enough in stock. The reason it's postponed. This item is a change order to replenish our reserves of recyclables from stock. The reason it solicited a change order is actually the contractor is honoring the bid price from the original order of recyclables. So we're technically adding to the original bid that was done. But we're getting the same pricing rather than having to. Rather than having to get new pricing in their honor of the original pricing. And item number eight is an award bid. This is for the renovation of the bid on Franklin Avenue. The low bidder for this contract in Sky Construction actually withdrew their bid. They submitted a letter withdrawing their bid. I'm recommending an award bid for the second low bidder, a work ahead for the project of repairing replacing Penn's industrial business with trinket building.
All right. Very good.
Do you have a question? Yes. Is this for the whole work or just parts that are our responsibility? Because I thought we had really decided.
Well, we reevaluated Franklin Avenue and we resented out notices to the businesses. As I was instructed by the board to do. And this is just an award for pricing if we want to go forward with the work. We don't have to move forward with the work. But there was 31 property on notice on Franklin Avenue. And there's also additional work to be done on village property, especially in the intersection of Stewart and Franklin around the fountain and by the block, which would be village.
Okay, so this locks in the bid pricing. We can obviously do what we need to do.
That's right.
Okay.
Yes. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Joe, are you being updated on that change order? What are the change orders?
So I've been working with Mr. Bees also. We're still waiting for some additional information. Mr. Bees waiting for additional information in order to make a decision. We have received, I think, I believe, all the information we need from the contractor. We're waiting for H2M to provide us a memo. And then I don't know exactly if he understands on his investigation, but I've tried to provide him with much information that he's asked for and required in order to give a recommendation.
What additional information are we looking for?
Well, I think Mr. Bees for the details behind their bid for the new painting contractor. They wanted to see the details behind the bid, what they exactly asked for. They want to see a recommendation letter from H2M saying that this is an acceptable change order to accept. H2M did it verbally, but we would rather have it written. Can you add anything to that?
No, that's correct. We did receive the additional, some of the additional information yesterday regarding how they went about selecting the new vendor for the painting and how they solicited proposals from a number of other painters. And then and this one wasn't noticed. But I wanted to see that documentation. H2M, I think, also wanted to see it. They have indicated their views of the reasonableness of the pricing. But without the backup data, I didn't want to go on record this morning.
So some questions about delays in the project and who delayed it?
Yes, that's correct. There were delays that were, some of the delays were on the village. Some of the delays were on the third parties. The county health department, things of that nature where work was halted as a result of directives from governmental entities. And the contractor's position is that what occurred is that he pointed to delay and allowing the vendor to work in subcontractor. That subcontractor said, well, not going to take the job anymore. And he got on a different painter at considerably higher price.
I might just have a question. So the dispute that we have is because of the delay and choosing a different contractor. It's not because we picked the color blue for the top, is that correct?
Well, it's certainly not the latter. It's not because we picked the color blue. But as to the actual cause of the delay, we're still trying to draft a timeline that this event occurred on this date. The next time that the vendor was authorized to go forward was on that date. He either did or didn't, things of that nature. Again, I don't want to get into too much of it in public session because this board ultimately will need to make a decision. And should the board make a decision that is not for the contractor's liking, there could be litigation. And therefore, any statements we make here are available for that litigation. I will simply say that at this point, we're trying to track down a more detailed current line than the very generic one which is by the contractor and try to determine where responsibilities with delays fell.
But this has nothing to do with the color that we picked to paint the water tower, correct?
As far as I know, with all the information available we thus far, it had nothing to do with the choice of color.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, is the work still progressing?
The work is progressing, yes. I mean, they have to crash the out again and paint it. And they're progressing with that process.
Are we concerned about the temperature and how that impacts the painting?
Yes, absolutely. You know, that does play a factor. Priming of the towers can be done as low as 35 degrees. Painting closer to 40, 45 degrees. So yes, that does become a factor. They're all working on the inside of the tower right now. So the inside of the tower is probably 60 to 70% sand less than prime at this point.
Mayor, as long as I am with Mike, I might also mention that at the conclusion of the consent calendar, I will recommend to the board that a motion be made to suspend the rules in order to add an item to the agenda. The resolution that is before you in connection with moving the H2M contract from the informational over to the board resolution as well as the ratification of the prior H2M contracts of similar nature. So I just want to alert the board that at the conclusion of the consent calendar, perhaps a trustee can move to suspend the rules to add the item.
Thank you. Mrs. Wu.
Good evening, Mayor. Tonight, I only have one item on the agenda. Item number one. This is a board request to appropriate funding for the termination payout reserve to pay out to employees who love the village service.
All right. This is fun.
Thank you, Mayor, and the board. Mayor, I'm not on the agenda this evening, but I do want to report that the new display is up and now from the board from return there. The new display on the wall that we use to show our budgets and other presentations. So they can easily display them.
All right. At this time, I think I'll certainly make sure that it falls under the map. All right, it's time for your comments. Please leave comments and questions from the board. Custie, hi, yes?
I just want everyone to be aware that Garden City won the AAA Platinum Award again this year. So I'd like to congratulate them.
I can't hear you. Test one, two, test one, two.
Okay, I'll try this again. I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that Garden City won the AAA AAA Association's Platinum Award this year for traffic safety. I wanted to congratulate the police department, DPW, and the traffic commission for their initiatives. We were one of six to win, six villages to win this Platinum Award. The villagers cited for expanding traffic safety efforts in 2019, including numerous targeted enforcement encouraging, safer driving, pedestrian-aiding areas, significant new signs prohibiting new terms about safety measures, including increased enforcement of speeding violations, all resulting in an 8% reduction in auto crashes village-wide, including a 10% reduction on Cathedral Avenue, a 19% reduction in injury-related crashes, a 30% reduction in pedestrian injuries, and 50% reduction in motorcycle crashes. It's good work by our police and our traffic department. I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and say thank you for your hard work.
Custie, morning. Hi, yes.
Just thought we should get up here and a couple of things. Jill, Ralph, where are we on the removing stuff from the malt fields?
So we have completed the process. We are basically down to topsoil, mounds of topsoil. The leaves are removed. They're always starting to fill it back up again as they got this started. A way of executing the contract that was awarded at the last meeting.
Great. Now the old parking field looks like it's like 98% of it.
Well, the bricks are installed. The next process is to actually bind them and fill it in and also pave the parking lot just north of it.
You know, have they settled in like two weeks?
I would say at least two more weeks. The filling in and the binding of the bricks are a very important part of the process and that's going to take a while. So to make sure that they're secure, locked, replaced for wherever we want.
Thank you.
You know, I stopped by to, I don't go to look at that a couple of times. I can't get over what you've done. They've done a very good job. Now we have those bricks. Yes, they have been there since 1905. And they look great. They didn't really have to abandon any of the bricks.
No, we were able to use, we used almost 90, somewhere between 90% of the original bricks.
Oh, and they lay it in very, very well. It looks very handsome.
It does.
Very good.
So Joe, go back to the leaves, one second. Is the plan now to, is that they accumulate or is the plan to just let them accumulate again?
Well, I mean, the issue we have now is we have a lot of topsoil. And a lot of stuff decomposed and it's dirt. So we've been talking over internally in terms of what we can do with the topsoil and maybe screen it. Because it's not clean topsoil. If we screen it, we can probably sell it and make money over it, possibly. That's an option. But I think to your point going forward, we probably will have to every year or so remove a prior year worth of leaves to try to keep it better under control.
There's a lot of space now when we talk about this.
Yeah.
Because we need space for vehicles and things like that as well. The thought was to clear out the space part of the vehicle and give DPW a little room. Maybe we build a shed or something. We have a lot of stuff stored outside. So if we can get on top of this, make some permanent space that was part of the block down the road.
And where are you with regards to the topsoil in terms of analyzing the options we have available?
We've started talking about it internally right now, but we haven't moved forward again yet. I will have to come back to the board for that in terms of, because we probably have to rent some equipment to do the work and there'll be some cost involved.
That topsoil is available to residents now?
Absolutely, yes. Topsoil is available free of charge for residents and the malt also.
And you'll help load it along the carts, right?
Sure.
The other thing I just want to add is obviously the villagers canceled the ceremony for veterans. I just wanted to thank all the veterans out there and their families for their service and sacrifice. There is one event that's happening on Saturday at the Rainbow Memorial at 10:30 they'll be laying the leaves there. So if you can, I'd be grateful to see some of it there.
Anything further?
10:30.
Anything further from Custie's? Questions or comments? So then we will move forward to citizens' comments on agenda items. Any other questions for the item 20 agenda we're reviewing and reviewing the other? Mr. Salem.
Okay. We just completed a question in the United States. And also the pandemic risk affected a heavy voting volume. Many states adopted increasing voting by mayor policies and longer hours and additional days for the person voting. So I'm wondering if Garden City's election next March, if we could allow voting by mayor and perhaps longer voting hours could possibly include months of these today before or starting before noon if it's getting out noon to 9:00 AM. Besides the reasons that our states have given to allow male voting, I heard that. Okay, so, uh, perhaps 20% of Garden City residents have seen it. And they want to vote. Apparently, they want to vote. Something I'd advise on our housing plan disabled and also the weather in March. It can be nice to smell. So I think this is an idea that the board should consider. That actually by next March, it'll only be four months from now that the virus is still going to be with us. So more and more people will be reluctant to vote to follow vote. So I'm just wondering, the board and the idea, who that's who I care about?
Mayor, may I just point out that absentee voting is available for village elections. And anyone in the village is free to.
And absentee voting versus male voting?
That's only the same thing, same thing, sir.
So then everybody would have to request?
They would request it with an absentee ballot. They have then provided an absentee ballot. They can vote on the absentee ballot and mail it back.
Would the village encourage people to do that? Let them know that that's voluntary because they might not be aware.
Yes, Mr. Salem, we did that with the other election also because of the coronavirus pandemic. We had many people that voted by absentee ballot. They called us and we sent them an absentee application, ballot application, and they returned it and they were able. A lot of people voted absentee in the last election.
For the last election, weren't the numbers significantly higher than normal?
Yes, we had a lot of absentee ballots. We get a list every election of disabled voters. And we automatically send out maybe 150 absentee ballots just to those people who are disabled, unable to come out to vote. Then we also get requests from people who are sick. And like I said, with the pandemic, we had quite a few people that wanted absentee ballots. So you start as well. And we will publicize that. And we do publicize that in paper. You are. Anyone further? Any other questions? Steve.
Steve, I would like to ask you if there are any comments on the agenda refreshments and the last meeting? Are you disabled or something? Do you have a comment on that?
Actually, Mr. Fox is here and we will be talking about that before we get to the consent calendar.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. So, uh,
Mr. Salem.
John Fox speaking, my gentleman. I'm sorry. I am the president. Good evening. John Fox speaking, my gentleman. I am the president of the agenda refreshments who runs the concession after the last meeting, thing on the agenda. I apologize for that. So I submitted some documents to Cameron Holden, to me. And some of the receivables. What I want to let the board know in addition to the in addition to the P and L statements that I submitted, that was not in there or on those statements, is the travel obligations that I made every time we renew the contract, infrastructure and happen improvements to the facility, have the pool and for our buildings. So just a quick recap. In addition to what I've submitted in letter form and P and L statements to you guys, prior to this year of the last five years, I spent about $64,000 in improvements to village concession and recreation. So it quickly includes the trailer community park, trailer at St. Paul's. It includes the entire refurbishments created dining rooms to choose for anybody. This is a pool that would be a practice for my establishment. Entire dining room, tables, chairs, booths, television sets, cable being built that I supply. Girls who are supposed to do special events both for the village to use and myself, the village doesn't, I believe, or maybe we've seen citizen picknicks which are fully adapted for that. Citizen picknicks and toy appreciation days. All those items and lists I submitted to you, the rebuild of the concession to your development, branded counters and countertops, not the resurfacing but the replacement of, you know, these buildings are, as you guys know, probably built in the early 60s. I maintain property in a way that I think is very helpful to the village and the residents. I consider it a partnership. I'm sorry, my, the whole idea of buying contracts is to have longevity, not to make a quick hit. So people say, why are you spending all this money? Because it is a profitable operation. I've never, not disclosed that to make a decent amount of money. But we reinvest a large amount of that money, which brings, you know, my share per year without counting dispatch here over the last five years to around $23,000 a year. Anyone that wants to work from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM every night, seven days a week, for 15 weeks for that money? You know, but just on the side. But so I just wanted to recap that to the board and the residents and make them aware of our relationship.
And Mr. Fox? Sorry, Dr. Mike. Anyway, John, we've known each other for 20 years. And I know after the last meeting, I made a point to give you a call. We sat and talked for probably 20 minutes or half hour. I think we both told each other things that the other one may not have been aware of. And I appreciated you giving us the additional information. Again, as you may be aware of certain things, whatever, I know that we'll work to do something with your question. Well, listen, I appreciated the time that you gave me. And like I said, we've worked together honorably on different things for 20 years, we've known each other a long time. So I appreciated you taking time.
And just for my... Now, I have longevity in a lot of my contracts, because this is what I do. I don't just grab copies, I reinvest it because I want to be in it all the time. Or at least it's like my time.
Thank you, John. So, what can you do the numbers again? Because I just tried to...
Okay, so, prior to this year, the past five years, the, my, you know, very accurate or rough numbers are $64,000 spent out of $184,000 profits over the last year. Five years prior to this year, including this year. That's not in that, I've got just over this last three years, the one that I've...
Well, that, that expenditures, the last three years, is that 43, right? Six, I think it was 40, 40, 46,000.
43, I was thinking, yeah. And then I went two years prior to that as well, in this.
Thank you. Are you making a proposal?
I'm making a proposal. Should I? If you want me, if you need me to, you should start asking.
Okay. I thank you for your comments, and we will go review this again, and we will follow it next time. At this time, I just want to mention that on the back of the agenda, you'll notice that we're going to discuss the votes in the casino. And just want to let you know that we will not be discussing that this evening. Right, at this time, I would like to raise the word approval of the minutes of three meetings. Since various people were not here, I will have to do this separately. So may I have a motion or approval of the minutes of the October 15th meeting? Hold on, second, trustee McInnes, and then the second and third meeting, hold on. And all in favor? All right, that, we move on to the second, October 27th, special meeting, executive session. May I have a, approval, a motion? Thanks. Mrs. Foley, and a second, trustee Lanning, and all those in favor?
I wasn't here, so I just can't...
All right, that was successful. And finally, the October 22nd meeting, which was a special meeting, may I have a motion? Trustee Foley, and a second, trustee McInnes, and all those in favor? And that passes successfully. We're going to move on to approving the consent calendar. All right, so...
I should take a read of it.
All right, let's go a little bit. Paying some...
So just to be clear, we're approving the awarding of the bid, or we're not actually doing the work? Is that correct?
That's correct. What, Mr. Button?
Yes, that's correct, but there is sections of Frankham that are village property. And I would like to proceed with village repairs, because we could...
But how do we separate that from the total amount?
Oh, the work, village work is approximately half my office.
Can we, can we approve it, we're going to approve the entire amount? Because how do we, how do we...
Well, no, so the, what you're approving is the contract with the vendor. Okay? What you're, what I'm asking, asking for approval is to, is to approve the rates for contractor to do the work. I, I, he won't do the work unless I ask him to do it. But this is to establish a contract that's work ahead at a specific rate to repair the damage.
In other words, this is the award of a contract, it will be contractually in the relationship with the vendor, but the vendor's contract still would require the Department of Public Works to say, go forward on this piece or that piece.
And how long is that going to be, lacking in place?
I believe the contract's 30 years.
A year, second.
A year?
All right, so, again, does anyone else have any questions on that? All right, so now, may I have an approval, a motion to approve the consent calendar? Trustee Foley, and a second. Trustee Foley, and all those in favor? All right, that was a special moment.
Mayor, may I inquire whether a trustee wishes to move to suspend the rules?
I'll make that motion, suspend the rule to approve some consent resolutions to ratify the progress of...
A move by trustee Noyes, for a second, seconded by the deputy mayor. Any discussions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. And at this time, absent further questions regarding saying that there are motions to approve the resolution that will authorize the mayor to execute the agreement... Sorry, my glasses. To approve a resolution for emergency contract exempt from competitive bidding pursuant to Resolution 58 of 2020, it's an agreement with H2M for design engineering services for work on emerging content that regula the well numbers 15 and 16, funds which are available under capital project account, is owed debt 1073 in the amount of $7,496,000. The same resolution also ratifies three other contracts of a similar nature. All of these contracts were on the board trustee's agenda, but unfortunately were under the FYI section rather than under the approval section. And because they were in excess of $50,000, do require a separate resolution.
The part, the, the, I don't want to hear the same thing, is not a contract with H2M between Philip Ross?
My apologies, okay? With Philip Ross, rather than H2M. The first three were with H2M, the last one is with Philip Ross. Is there a motion to that effect? Moved here by trustee Noyes, seconded by trustee Iron, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye. And you have it to the pass. Thank you.
All right.
I'm sorry, gentlemen, it's still design engineering work, correct?
No, this is for the installation of the...
For the installation?
Excuse me, the AOP system at the 16th. The previous three, the ones from July and September, were H2M and engineering services.
At this time, we will have some discussion on finance, like deputy mayor, hold on.
Thank you, mayor. Can everybody hear me? Okay. I apologize, I usually, when I speak, I like to look open to see you. But what I'm going to be doing is I'm going to be reading to the paper. So I apologize if I'm looking down dead going, but it's the only way that I can do this. Over the last four weeks, there have been numerous letters and social media posts that have questioned the finances and the fiscal responsibility of our building. Certain individuals have presented their assumptions in an attempt to scare our residents about the current financial position of our building. This is a dangerous path to follow. They have used words like fiscal chaos and even bankruptcy when describing our village finances. I can no longer allow these statements to go unanswered, and I would like to address several themes, one by one. The first one is that this board is planning the development of an $80 million hockey rink. There is absolutely no truth to this claim. Two years ago, when the presentation was made about St. Paul's, there were numerous ideas of working to build at St. Paul's. During those presentations, if you remember, because I know there was probably 700, 800 people who were attending, Triple B stated that the very first step that we need to take before any decision was made was to preserve what we have. We, the board, have authorized the stabilization, stabilization of the building by closing up broken windows and holding room. We have taken huge amounts of vines off the windows that were causing damage. We are in the process of preserving the stained glass in the chapel, and we will abate inside the building of all the chemicals inside. There is nothing else that we have approved. Walt Beal, who was our general contractor, attempted to verify this on social media, and he was attacked for telling the truth. Once again, there is no $80 million hockey rink plan. This is a false narrative that is being spread for the sole purpose of causing controversy that does not exist. It is important to remember that regardless of any conversations, it is the actions of the board that matters. Next, there were three letters that Mr. George Salem addressed. I've spoken to Mr. Salem many times over the years. I know that Mr. Salem loves this village and believes passionately when he writes his letters, but numerous statements that he presents are incorrect. His last letter, Waterbowl, was stating that we have issued bans, which are short-term down. That is correct, but the reason that we chose to use this vehicle is because we have already been awarded reimbursable grants from the state, estimated in the amount of $9 million to help offset our cost with the 1-4 dioxin project. And again, as I said before, if you look, this village started working on 1-4 dioxin a year before you ever saw it in the newspaper. That is the rate of reimbursement for each well, which is at approximately 60%. After we filed for our additional grants, we will then issue our normal long-term debt that will not be covered by the state reimbursement. It would be irresponsible for this village to issue the total amount now in long-term bonds when we do not know what our final cost is. In addition to this, we also issued the bans, and when they were issued, they were issued at a premium. Reason for this is because we have such a quality rating. And because we use the bans, the premium will help reduce our watering costs by $1.4 million. So people were willing to pay us, the village, over $1.4 million just to own our debt. Once again, we want to immediately address our water issues and not wait for any type of reimbursement from the state. That's the reason why we use the bans. The safety of our village water is our top priority. We are paying cash, I'm sorry, is our top priority. Our new water tank will cost approximately $8 million, but we are only financing six months. We are paying cash for the other two. In addition, we are using our cash in the water fund to do our well rehabilitation every year. Well, well rehabilitation means you have to drill down into the well, you have to replace all the equipment. Mr. DeFrancisco will go into further detail, but we usually do at least one well per year. Yes, it was stated that we did raise water rates the last two years to, due to our water tower replacement, which by the way, is a normal infrastructure work when you have an 86-year-old water tank, and our 1-4 dioxin work. Most communities on Long Island have and will face the same issues. In Mr. Salem's letter, called High Hopes, he states that the $8.9 million of projects were discussed. What he did not state in his letter is that that night, 2.4 million projects were deferred, which represented a 27% reduction in the village's capital improvements. That was our board reevaluating our budget during our fiscal year and making prudent fiscal adjustments, which is what we're being accused of not doing. Finally, in Mr. Salem's original letter on 9/11, he makes several incorrect observations. He states that our village annual budget should be reviewed quarterly or semi-annually, and we need to be more transparent. Since our last budget was passed, Mrs. Wilber, her department, have provided our board in public meetings, updates on our village department by department. This was done on May 21st, on June 18th, on July 16th, and September 17th at our board meetings, which are all public and our table. He also stated that we lost $500,000 in real property tax revenue from the Sears building. This is incorrect. The real property taxes owed on that building is not $500,000. It is $210,285 for the fiscal 2020 and 2021 year, and the full year taxes have been paid by the property. Last, as the Salem states, that due to our improved management, we will do our triple A rating. On our last movie's report, rather than me trying to say anything different against that, why don't I quote what Moody said? "The village benefits from strong fiscal management, ample reserves and liquidity, minimal debt burdens, and manageable pension and retirement healthcare liabilities. Strong financial management continues to contribute to annual surplus operations." Once again, I'm quoting from Moody's. My last point. My last topic is the overall fiscal health of our village. When COVID-19 hit our community and our village, every manager and employee stepped up. Due to their efforts, we as a village are not facing any massive playoffs or massive type accidents. All you have seen is prudent fiscal management. I am very proud of the work that our employees have done in a very difficult year. To spread this false information is a slap in the face to every one of our employees. As I have always stated, we can agree to disagree on any topic. I just ask that before you present your part of argument to the public, that you review your facts. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, trustee Philbrook, that was very important.
Can I respond?
Phil, why, why don't we rely...
Seriously?
That's not...
Why don't I respond?
Just a second. I believe I can affirm myself against every choice that Mr. Foley has made. Regarding any million hockey rink, that is not a number that's known by anybody. There's never been anyone put out there, so nobody knows what the number is. In my report, I never, I never put a number, what I thought, say, oh, of course. I said, on our number, it could be 50 million, it could be 100 million, it could be 100 million. Nobody can refute that it could be any of those numbers. If you say it's going to be 40 million, you can't prove that, okay?
You see, when I was a... And I'll talk back to you, because if you're... I never said that we were the one who said the 80 million dollar...
Okay, all right, I know.
In your first letter, you stated...
Let him guess, please.
Excuse me, I'm talking back.
Please don't call out in the audience. We need to be civil with this.
Mr. Salem and I have been on each other many years, we've talked many times. Mr. Salem, in your original letter, what you had done was, is that you were, when you were making your suggestion, you did say $150 million for St. Paul's project. Now again, you are not the one who was presenting the $80 million. Just letting you know, I didn't say...
I didn't say 150 was the number. I said it could be as high as 150, it could be 100, it could be 200. What was the number? It's a big number, okay? It's a big one. No matter what it is, it's a big one.
Right, my only point was is that there is no project.
Okay, the other thing that I'd like to make, that January 7th, January 2019, the board signed a resolution to go ahead and say, "Oh, the development." Didn't give a number or a plan, but the vote was eight to nothing on the board at that demolition, that they wanted to develop the building. Is there anything about demolition? In fact, they said they're excluding demolition from the consideration. Is that correct?
No, what the board did was, the board said that we were going to move forward with the building. What we did was exactly what I presented here. The only thing that the board has authorized to do was to stabilize the building by closing the windows and the holes to the roof, by taking away the vines, by looking to preserve the stained glass that everyone said was so important to do. And now we're talking about cleaning the building of all the chemicals. Other than those four things, this board has not authorized or voted...
I understand that, but you know, I was questioning the intent on your minds to do something. You never said demolition, okay? That means you want to do something with the building, is that correct?
You're making an assumption, I never said...
That's what it says in the resolution.
Well, again, that's your assumption, but...
It says in the resolution. It says eight to nothing vote to develop the building. That's what you said. It doesn't mean you have a plan or anything, definitely said you want to do it. Although, you don't have demolition on your calendar, which would be part of the consideration.
Well, as a matter of fact, Mr. Salem, you have come to many presentations that were done at St. Paul's. One of them was actually here in this room. One of them was actually here in this room. And what happened was is that one of the things that you spoke to me about many times was the aspect of needing to have a refresher on St. Paul's. I agree with you, and in every single meeting, and when you and I have spoken, I have said 100% that even though the board legally has that right to do it, I said, "Bottom line is I would never vote for it," and many of the trustees have said that. So all I'm saying to you is that when we talk about St. Paul's, again, when we talk about for the invasion, for example, we said, "The reason you have to remake the building is whether or not you develop it or even if you tear it down," which you can go back and repeat again, you said that to me, "You have to clean up what's inside the building."
I don't doubt that. If you have an intent, I think.
Well, you're assuming that that's our intent. What I'm saying to you is, you're making that assumption. I'm telling you that that's not the case. If that's what you believe, that's fine.
I'm watching you say, saying you want to do it. It's like threatening crime, okay? You didn't permit it, but you threatened to do it.
Okay.
So that's. Now, with respect to the $1.4 million from bond revenue that you gave in excess, that's a false or initial statement because you sold the bonds at a premium to their core value. And that $1.4 million was the payment that was paid. The people that bought these bonds did not get a 5% return. The coupon was 5%. The return when you buy them was less than 1%.
Well, I don't know what the return to them was. All I know is the village received the premium. Whatever, why? People have different reasons, and I've been in the finance business for 33 years. People have different reasons for buying bonds at a premium. So what they do is they look for safety and they look for current income. If in the event, they pay more for the bond, they're willing to lose money on principal in order to have a quality bond and have a great return. That's the individual choices that they make. That has nothing to do with the village.
I find, you know, why everybody would buy a bond at a premium when they're going to lose money once the premium is going to go away. So when you buy a 5% bond at 110, you know, 10% off, you're not getting 5%, you're getting 1%.
The reason that they would do that is that certain financial institutions, when they invest in money, particularly, let's say, large insurance companies and the like, they're restricted as far as which investments that they can buy. Some of them can only buy AAA. So if they buy the bond, and let's say it's paying 5%, and they pay a premium, after they lose their principal, they're probably only going to get 3.5%.
Less than that, 1%.
What? The number doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Let's pick 1%. So I'll make it happen. So let's make it 1%. So they feel that for us, I would rather have a AAA rated investment and only get 1%. Again, we're getting into something that has nothing to do with the village. That's their choice. Our demand was so high, they were willing to pay us a premium. That was the whole point, what I said.
All right. Well, regarding the voluntary anticipation note, those are not sure through that, okay? In the legal sense, they're sure through that, but in the real world, there's going to be bottles in there. Now, regarding the $9 million that you're expecting from the state.
Right.
That is not a contractual agreement by the state. That is a handshake that says, "We'd like to give you $9 million bucks." Why not receive the $9 million? Am I correct?
Well, again, we haven't received the money yet.
It's not yet.
So the state, the state set up a program, and they set up a grant program. So what happened was, we filed for the grant with them. So in any event, we receive, by the time we're done receiving our grants, the actual long-term debt bonds we may be issuing might be 19 or 20 million. I don't know. I don't know, maybe 25 million. But the reason that you would use the bands, and you received 1.4 million in premium while we're issuing them, what happens is that you issue the bands, once you find out what exactly your final cost would be, that's the prudent way we do that. You don't issue long-term debt if in the event you would be reimbursed for a significant amount of money you're issuing.
But you're carrying on money that you might not receive. And that's why you're proof.
Okay. And again, that's your opinion, that's fine.
It's true.
No, no, it's not true. What happens is, I mean, again, this is now, we're getting into the New York State. So New York State is going to sit there, and New York State is going to say, we're going to sit there in public, we're going to help all the communities that we now have 1-4 dioxide, they're going to step towards the $900 million. Oh, by the way, we're going to say that every morning, we're going to say, "Good luck, I'm paying for the water. Even though we said we're going to give you the $9 million, we're not, I hope you guys do well with the water." New York State is not going to do that. So.
Well, that's true. Something you don't say that.
And again, that's correct. If in the event that does happen, then what will happen is that we will then issue the long-term debt. But right now, we have a commitment from the state.
Let me, let me ask Trustee Foley. The school board has a limit on voluntary anticipation notes that they can issue. The limit, as I saw in the papers, the state footnote of the school board, there was a 2% limit on the amount of bands that they issue. 2% of the budget. Now, 2% of our budget, I know we're not the school board, 2% of our budget, we got $2 million of voluntary anticipation notes, we issued 40 million. That sounds a little bit different than what the school board is allowing under their law.
It's two different, it's two different.
It's two different things.
Two different structures.
We can't speak to what the school board is currently doing because we're not, let me finish. We're not that board. The board, the school board has always carried more debt than that, similar to the way Mr. Bolow just explained, at least in my time.
I don't think we're understanding anything. I'm saying the school board has a 2% of the budget limit on how much bands they issue, okay? That's factual. You want that up? Casey's standing in the city to hook it up.
But that's not the only limit debt.
Okay. But Mr. Salem, with all due respect, again, whatever different restrictions they have in the school board, it has nothing to do with the village. We don't have the same restrictions. It's a different, it's a different structure.
It's right. The school board has tighter rules, the more conservative rules.
That's it.
No, that's been told by the state, not by the state.
Told by the state.
I don't want to be the boss, but 2% is in the rooms of the county. And they don't allow that.
Okay.
So let's, there'd be more room in my business. Regarding updates to the voluntary estate of the village, I don't see that you've done adjustments during the year. Will you announce amounts, are you changing the budget by this amount up or down? If you're doing adjustments, you should tell us. We're going to reduce salaries, we're going to reduce employees.
Because we haven't reduced salaries, we haven't reduced employees.
There's no point going in here if you're not paying.
Mr. Salem, at the last meeting, where you wrote the letter about the, about the issue where we brought up the $8.9 million, at that meeting, we reduced down the amount of capital projects by 2.4 million dollars.
I'm not wrong on that.
Sir, please let the conversation continue without me calling out from the public. It's very rude. If you feel the need to do that, please do it outside.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Salem, the other thing about this is, look, you and I, again, we've spoke several times. When I gave you a call on the phone, one of the things that you said is you said, "We don't even have a balance sheet." And I said to you, "That's not true." So what I did was.
I don't want to hold on, I don't hold on.
So what I did was, is that I went on the site while I was talking to you, and I told you exactly where to look, and I told you on page nine, it says, "Balance sheet." So what I'm saying to you is, and Mrs. Wu and her department, on four occasions, have given us updates, department by department. So if you're saying to me, "Bob, you're not telling us when you have reduced salaries, you're not telling me when you have had layoffs of employees," what I'm telling you is, because the fiscal strength in this village, we have not had to do that. I know other villages, I just read about how Glenn Hope just passed the budget, and their budget is shooting up by 7.9%.
I agree.
That's not, that's not going to city. Our fiscal, our fiscal situation here is totally different. But anyway.
I spoke to Ralph before the meeting tonight, because I read about Glenn Hope. He said their bond rating jumped to 20, less than triple B. I'm not saying we're triple B. But their resident taxes, as I said, are concerned. Regarding the AAA, I have not said you will lose your AAA. I have said, clearly you're heading in the wrong direction. If you keep going the way you're going, you will lose your AAA. That's all I said.
Okay.
Okay? That's an opinion.
Okay.
We, we are issuing so many bonds that the debt service on the bond is going to choke the budget at $67 million budget of our debt service, before you know it's going to be 10% of the budget. And therefore, if you're meant to do something, you have to raise taxes away, people are, you can't have the debt service going up and up and choke the budget.
And to address that specifically, you remember we had discussions during the budget season, you remember that I voted against the budget? And one of the reasons I did was because I said that the bonds that we were issuing, because Mrs. Wu made a presentation, I forget, what month did you do that, where you made a presentation where our board issued 7% of, 7.911?
I believe that was around, you know, December.
Okay, it was in February. So she made a presentation in the boardroom, and that presentation said that for us to keep everything stacked, that for us, we needed to issue $7 million or less. So at the board meeting that you wrote the letter about, we reduced down our capital spending from 8.9, we reduced it down to six and a half. And the bottom line is, when we issue the bonds, it'd be for a total of 7 million. So by doing that, we actually did prudent management, rolled it back in line, and therefore, it is going to be staying on par, online, and it will not be increasing. So I agree with you 100%, but that's exactly the action that we took, Mr. Salem.
The, the couple of things that are threatening the budget, and that is the firehouse is unaccounted, it looks like you guys want to do it. That would be 10 million, 10 million dollars of bonds, we don't have any, this is more than 20.
Well, first of all, it wouldn't be in anybody's plans, because first of all, we haven't received the presentation yet. I don't know what the final estimated cost would be, and this board has not decided what exactly they would be doing with the firehouse. So you just can't put that on our bonding if you have no idea what you're going to be doing.
Okay. I think you know what I'm saying. We're heading in the wrong direction. If you have this, we understand spend, spend, and we don't have to pay for the spending.
Okay.
Thanks. And so I, AAA did, is vulnerable, it's not guaranteed forever, and the ratios that Moody's used to establish an interest rate are going to be challenged in the next couple of years.
Okay.
Too much debt, I mean, I think, well, there's a reason, your debt is probably best with the revenues.
Okay, but by, by us sitting there, actually, our revenues this year are exceeding what we estimated that we would have, exceeding it significantly. And the adjustments that this village and the employees made was to reduce down costs and expense and everything else in ways that, that I'm so proud that they did. Every department, every manager, everyone's team, they said, "Where can we make adjustments in this situation with COVID?" And that's one of the things that the village has done. So we finished up last fiscal year, hundreds of thousands of dollars of debt in surplus, and right now, we have a significant surplus right now in what we're doing. But once again, as I said before, with the bonding that we're going to be doing, at that level, at 7 million, it will have no increase whatsoever in the, in the principal plus interest payments of the village. Mr. Salem, the other point I'll put out here is, it's part of our budget, as part of our budget, we build in reserves, right? For this very reason, so if something like COVID hits, we have the reserves that we can tap into, whatever we can necessary, or emergency cuts and expenses. But above and beyond that, we're still looking at the expense line. So we are, we are being very prudent in handling the village's finances.
With the huge reserves, you're weak in the strength of your ability, you know? When you, when you're weak reserves, that makes the, the economy, the network of the village go down.
And we haven't completed, and we haven't completed our reserves, though, and we have to.
We need to say we need to. So we have to establish that so we can use them if we need to.
Right. Like, for example, when Sandy Head, all the other communities were sitting there waiting to get reimbursement, how did Garden City get everything done so quickly? You were able to use our reserves, and those reserves still exist today.
Okay. And I'm saying that the reserve is probably going to go down as a result of what's happened this year.
Well, again, I, unless there's something that's going to happen that I can imagine or I can't see right now, and again, anything's possible, but the reality is, what I'm telling you is that would be excess revenue that we have so far this year, we, again, we finished last year with hundreds of thousands of dollars in reserves, of excess reserves, and I imagine that it might be significantly higher than that this year. So like I said, with everything this village has done, no massive layoffs, no massive tax hikes, everything we've done, we're able to pay for all the things that we've done.
I'd like to know, how many villages have the evidence you guys have that we have a pandemic, we have a virus, we have a recession, we have unemployment, and Garden City's village budget is not going to be affected?
Well, I'm not saying that it hasn't been affected. What I'm saying to you is that we have done fiscal prudent management, and the reality of it is, when you look at the finances of many villages around us, believe me, you can, you can sit there and you can have a discussion with Mr. Swazi, who came from Glenn Hope, believe me, you can, you can talk to him all day long about our villages and your management at that time. Listen, again, not that he went to you, but is there anything else here that I would cover a little time?
I think one moment.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, my goodness. And last thing I want to say, you and I had a nice discussion about our board, and you gave me a 7% grade in my report. I have, you have three seconds, I'm going to say, I expect you, I don't give you a high grade, you would give my report.
Thank you, sir.
Any further comments on that?
Let's go.
Yes, I follow.
Ms. Grayden, I want to add a quick little question to Jackson. Last, sorry, I did, was an incident on my block. I was picking out a garbage, and it was a truck in front of my house, parked by a pump. And there was somebody in it, I didn't know what was going on, I put down the garbage, and I quietly went back and took it, and then he got out, and he went across the street. And he tried the door to the car, then he went to the next side. The third side was successful. And when I saw the gallows coincidences, that was great, that was information from me, two cars, anyone each way, they spotted a car leaving the driveway, they took a license plate number, things when he found out, weird, male, selling, et cetera. It winds up, he had stolen the truck, et cetera. Second time, he had a key to it from the first time. Don't leave keys in your car with the doors open. And I was standing there, I've got another neighbor that does the same thing. Why not put a sign on your car? Come and take it. But I did say, officers James, Fennell, and Sean Sorell were wonderful. I, you have to compliment them. Everybody who changed did a fabulous job. They went south and west, the Friday, the real bad day, and everything went well. Within 20 minutes, they had it in a parking lot by TV Bank or in Parkmont. You know, they were wonderful. It was quick, it was easy, they treated every time. They were smart enough to sit down, how many parts she, she took two, the two of them, "What was that, I'm sorry?" Well, he went up from the truck, was there some, "Don't leave the keys in your car." And if you see something, say something. It was so early, it was dark, the city was wide, I bothered him, but there wasn't a light on in the, the 321, but thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to say thank you very much. Pretty much, pretty much, people do not appreciate the work that the officers do in so many things, and for you to recognize those two officers, thank you very much.
And again, I'm going to respond, I'm going to choose the word, but I got flowers from my, it's flowers from the Navy, so we're coming. But I got flowers, I'm wearing flowers from the Navy, so we're coming.
Yes, I follow you.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Pearl. I'm on 1:30 o'clock. I just wanted to bring your attention back that the village has to make some arrangements to stop the leak blowers. They're going constantly. And I gave my attention that several villages, particularly two of WestJet, they're watching on in Calhoun, have a ban on these leak blowers. They go on for the entire day. And someone buried it before, actually, whatever it is, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, time on the sun. So I don't know if this issue has been brought to you before. I also don't know what steps may be taken with this legislation or whatever. But I just wanted to refer to the fact that there are, now in Calhoun, but two villages not far away, Calhoun and Washington, which happened the last debate, because the noise and interruption to the light of this knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Neil Simler, Hunter Road, Trustee Delaney, I wanted to thank you for your letter about the fire, the department's response to the fire on Calhoun. The tape and the items and photos was especially helpful. Deputy Mayor Volker, I have a great respect for you. I also respect Mr. Salem. And I think this dialogue connect was very helpful. Thank you very much.
Mr. Simler, I just want to let you know that, well, my name is on that letter. Majority of that letter is by Chief Strisco. So if you guys want to ask the, think the positive...
Well, I thank you both, but you were the end of this show, so thank you very much. Chief, thank you too. Good man. Came to my house, you know.
Anything further?
Mayor, in the absence of further comment, I respect the request of a very brief advice of counsel following the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Salem.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to...
That move to a second session for vice president.
Trustee Volker, do I need a second? Trustee Volker, over to the paper.
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, everybody.